Good afternoon. I will call to order the August 7, 2023, school committee meeting. I'm going to read this statement quickly. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have harbor media recording as well as a Zoom recording. Is there anyone else recording tonight's meeting? If you could raise your hand if you are online. Okay. So we'll move over to Item 2, which is approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes to approve.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on July 10, 2023.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, those who are approved. Item 3 is questions and comments. We have set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Our practice is to take questions and comments during the new business items for those that are on the agenda. If you would like to ask a question or comment, if you could, please raise your hand and I will call on you. No, okay. So otherwise, I'm not going to read this long thing. All right, so we'll move over to Item 4, superintendent's report. So I'm going to pass this over to Dr. Adams.
Great. In your packet, we gave you some initial enrollment numbers for September. More or less, it's sort of evening out across the district, and these are just initial numbers at the end of August. We'll bring up, we'll bring you a new update. At the elementary, we've gained approximately 14 students. We've lost, it's a wash, about 12 students at the middle school, but again, enrollments are coming in and out. As we gain one, we lose one. And at the high school, we're at a negative one. We've lost some and gained some, so we're at a negative one. We'll have better numbers for you in the, in the fall, I mean, at the end of the month, sorry.
Questions? Matt?
Just curious for kindergarten, do we typically pick up more? I noticed the number's a little lower than normal, but I imagine that's the number we're least confident in because maybe some people are coming in at the last second? Or do we, is it normal? Like, this is probably about what it will be?
I'm assuming it's probably where it's probably going to be, but I imagine we had a delta of plus 14 at the elementary, so I'm assuming we'll see some additional registrations as the next couple of weeks go on.
Okay.
But you're, you're right. In comparison to the grade one numbers, you can see there's a significant difference.
Yeah.
And I'll add, I'll add that the graduating class was a very big class. Yep. So I think at the end of the month, we'll have a better picture, as well as we'll do it again in September and see where those numbers land.
Do we, are we able to get, I think the answer is no, but understand, like, the population? Because again, this, this could be just, you know, there happen to be less kindergarteners in Hingham, or it could be there's more families making an active decision to send their kid not to Hingham Public Schools. We don't have access to that type of information, do we?
What we do have is we do take, get the census information
Okay.
at the beginning of the year, and we track those kids on the census in terms of how many of them have registered or collected information, and how many of them have indicated that they are going to another school.
Okay.
So to the extent that that information is available, that's what we were able to track. I don't know, Dr. Adams, if you have anything else that you have as well?
We do, as we're required, in January, we call all of the schools that usually receive Hingham students and do an audit and get the numbers from them. And we gave you that information
Yeah.
last January, and we'll do that again this year. So that's where we collect that information. We can share that, we can dig it out again from last January and share it again.
Yeah.
The Department of Ed just updated theirs in June from 2023.
Yeah.
And that, that you've got on the privacy. Yes, you can actually go on Department of Ed and it's all on in the number of people that ages with it. Not that, they don't break it up by how many fifth graders, sixth graders, seventh graders, but it gives you the total number of students and then the percentage of kids. And it's the same percentage as it was last year.
And I think the town clerk, my memory's a little bit foggy, but I think there's an ability, some towns send out, when they send out, the town clerk sends the census, they include maybe a questionnaire about the schools?
Yes, you had suggested a district that was doing that. I believe it was Hanover, maybe?
I think it was Hanover. So we, so
Yes.
town clerk is willing to do it if it's something we'd like to
Because again, with kindergarten in particular, I mean, the numbers are almost closer to COVID numbers, which could be nothing, or it could be something. It would be useful to understand what's going, you know, if, if anything, what's driving that.
I mean, that's anecdotally, when you talk to the real estate agents and that those people, there's not very much supply in Hingham anymore or to and of, so that could have an impact on things as well, too, in terms of number of kids coming into the districts as well.
Although I saw a lot of for sale signs for recent graduates. One to one.
Yep, so we'll look for ways to continue to collect more information, including via the town clerk, and see if we can do that. Leave those go out in January usually? Or I thought they went out in January?
Yeah, I think it's January.
There's also an invitation to a ground baking ceremony on Friday, August 25 at 11:00 a.m. We want to invite the community to attend at the current Foster Elementary School for our new elementary school building. We invite the community to attend. We know it was a community effort, and the school represents the community's commitment to education, including the new elementary school. So we're looking forward to a great ceremony. Included also is some information on personnel. We've had six appointments, as listed, including a substantially separate educator at the, at East, a half-time educator at South, a South elementary classroom teacher, our special education administrator, Amy Muldoon, a long-term sub at South for a music teacher, and an executive assistant to the assistant superintendent. We have no retirements. We had two resignations, a teacher at PRS and a reading interventionist at Foster, and there was one transfer position. We also outlined in additional memo the open positions that we currently have. There are three elementary teachers that are posted for purposes of staff on leave. Some of those positions don't start until later in September, but there, there's hope to get started early to make sure we have someone in place. There are nine other teaching positions currently open. We expect at least four to be filled by the end of this week. They're currently in the works, and we hope to have at least four of those all set. We, in addition, have two elementary reading interventionists that are needed. Some of those folks have moved on to other positions. And there are four office positions, sort of central office or clerical positions in the schools that are open. And just in the back, the second page also listed, we expect three, traditionally, we have three to four paraprofessional openings in each of the school buildings, and we expect that's what we see currently right now, and it's pretty consistent with past years. As with past years, we will need also custodial maintenance, bus drivers, substitutes, and food services, and we often see some churn on those positions, but it seems like it's consistent with past years. We also are seeking speech and language pathologists. We currently contract some of those services out, and so we have posted to see if we can potentially get some staff on board in order to reduce, provide those services in a more economic manner than doing through contracted services. And those will be funded through state grants.
Does anybody on the committee have any questions?
Thank you. How are we stacking up this year? I know last year was a bit, or maybe even two years ago, was a bit of an anomaly in the number of open positions, just because of COVID. Are we feeling, is this sort of the average-ish number of positions open?
It feels pretty consistent.
Yeah.
I think from last year.
Do you remember how many new teachers we had last year?
I think it's probably about, I remember about 18 to a little less than 20.
Okay.
So we're pretty consistent.
Yeah. Because, and how many, how many positions in the district altogether? Six hundred?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Dr. Adams, I am not sure how to raise my hand on this virtual meeting. Could I just say one thing in regards to the personnel conversation?
Yes, I'll take, if you can hang on one moment, I'm going to take questions for the, from the rest of the committee first, and then I'll call on people. And I, I think that sounded like Laura.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
Just so we're worried about meeting on special ed services for the fall?
No, we only have one position for a special education teacher, and that's as an academic tester, so we posted that position. So we're meeting those services. We have contractors for speech and language services that we can use those services and provide those. We're just seeking additional ways that might be more cost efficient to do so.
No one should see that we're not, we're not at 100% employment worried that their kids aren't going to get the services in September.
Paraprofessionals, we're, you know, seeking out paraprofessionals, and, but it seems like the rate of replacement that we have is consistent with past years. So, you know, we have folks who are getting jobs, you know, teachers who, who are looking for jobs or are not getting their master's degrees, that are now getting full-time employment, that are now saying, hey, I have a job, a full-time teaching job, so I'm not coming back as a para. So that's, some of that's happening at this moment. So we're hopeful to recruit. Katie reminded me, on August 23, we're doing a job fair, on-the-spot job fair, from 4:00 to 6:00, where folks can come and, on-the-spot, be interviewed and start the paperwork, the initial paperwork, including a query and some payroll, and get information on benefits. And then we will process their paperwork, including checking references and doing the necessary background checks, so that we can hopefully recruit and get folks processed and get excited about joining the Hingham public schools.
Awesome. Is that new this year?
I think there's been some history of trying it in the past, but, you know, hopefully we can get, our purpose is just try to recruit specifically paras, substitutes, custodians, bus drivers, food service workers. That's really our target, our audience for that job fair.
Awesome.
I think it's been widely publicized this year in a way it hasn't been in the past.
Yes.
So, yeah, it's just good.
Yes. And we're grateful for some of the partners, PTOs and others, who've been sharing the information as well. I know there were some questions about the practices around salaries. We have not changed our process for processing for hiring. In the budget, we traditionally process a lot, a master's five. Remember, we have our lanes going across, which is the educational experience, and then we have our steps that are based upon experience within the public schools. We traditionally budget for a master's five, especially for new positions, and we try to hire for a master's five. There are occasions for specifically, specific positions that are hard to fill. Usually those are science and math and special education, in which we may go, may need to go higher in the steps, either in the lanes, because person has much more experience, academic experience, or in their experience in the public school settings. The steps are usually based on their experience working within the public schools. So that's been our traditional experience. Jolene, don't remember, in the budget, with the nursing coordinator, in the budget process, that was allotted a higher salary because we knew we needed to attract for that position someone with much more experience, so that in the budget, we allotted a larger amount. Usually in the practice, the, you know, between hiring some folks, especially in harder-to-fill disciplines, and lower at another position, it balances out in the budget for the most part. If there's questions about that.
Laura? So Laura, if you don't mind stating your name and address, and then asking your question?
Hi, this is Laura Winters for Cutter Hill Road. I, as a mother of a child with special needs, I've just been trying to clarify a couple of things in the hiring process that I just am starting to learn more about. I know, Dr. Adams, you just mentioned that step five is sort of where you are with a hire, but I'm wondering if you actually look at other public school positions someone has held, or if it's just Hingham public school positions, when you take that into consideration for hiring? If someone worked for 20 years in Milton and then came to Hingham, would they still be only hirable at a step five? Or would you only look at however much time they've served in Hingham?
So it depends, we use a couple of factors. We do need to take into account the budget, but when we put people on steps, we use their public school experience under employment in a public school as placement on their steps.
Is that a global practice? Because I feel like so many professionals have so much experience beyond their public school experience. So for example, would a 30-year private school teacher not qualify as a step three because they were in a private school versus a public school?
It is a very common practice that in school districts, you would get your placement on steps based upon your public school experience. There are districts who will also cap depending on their budget, their CBAs, their contractual agreements, the placement of steps.
Okay. And then the second part of this, and I mentioned this in an email that I sent to Nats earlier today, I feel like we're at a really great crossroads for an opportunity to maybe rethink how we're hiring. I have two daughters who have already pulled out of Hingham Public Schools, and they are in private school. I have one daughter with special needs who's still in public school, and I really, we moved here for the public schools. I have great faith that this daughter can succeed. And so I just, maybe I'm paying more attention now, but I want to make sure that she has the best opportunity to succeed, so I want to make sure she has the best possible teachers. Is there a maximum step? I mean, you say step five is the maximum you would hire, or the maximum we're considering. Is that indeed the case? Would we never consider an incredibly qualified teacher who was a step seven?
That's not what we, what I said. Master's five is what we budget for and what we plan for, and we try to hire for. There are instances where hard-to-fill positions such as science, math, or special education, where at times we will consider staff at a higher step.
Okay, final question. Have we done that this year? And how often have we done that this year in our hiring practices?
We are still in the process of hiring, really early, so we haven't done it yet this year.
Okay. We're three weeks out. That feels not early, but thank you for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Laura. I'm not sure if anyone else is having a problem raising hands. Does anybody else have a question?
Lee's iPhone, it looks like.
Oh. Lee's iPhone?
Yeah.
Okay. Lee?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, if you don't mind stating your name and address, please.
Yeah, so this is Lee Roy, and I'm at 16 Old County Road.
What's your question?
Hi, so I have a daughter going into middle school, a son entering third grade, and my son is currently on an IEP. Sorry. And obviously, there's a lot happening in the house.
We hear you.
So my main concern is, kind of actually touching on what Laura mentioned, I have to, I, I, you know, I, I work, I don't really pay too much attention to what's happening moving to Hingham, knowing that it has great school systems, and my concern now is, you know, we're passing these overrides and that nothing seems to be changing to improve what's currently happening. And with what happened with COVID, we have been spending so much money on all this private tutoring and private speech language and math skills and stuff for both my daughter and my son. And I'm concerned now that it's not going to get better within our public school system. And I'm just wondering what the plan is for that, what the budget is showing for that, and how we're going to address this in the next few years.
So I know, Dr. Cataldo's in the audience as well. She and I have spoken a lot of providing opportunities to engage our special education families. We've talked about several goals for the coming year, and one is to ensure opportunities to hear from our families and get their input. I know she's been meeting with families the last couple of weeks. I as well have met with some families, and we are doing some initial planning about continuing that into the fall, into the coming school year. In addition, working on an in-depth program evaluation that will give us some feedback on the strengths and needs of the special education program, so that we can do some short-term and long-term planning. We've also talked about providing for transparency in our programming, getting more information online, the entrance and exit criteria for our programs. So those are all things that are currently underway and beginning planning. And I know I've invited Dr. Cataldo to come back in the fall at a coming meeting to provide sort of her initial overview and entry plan, as well as regular updates to the school committee and the community about our progress. So we, just today, also did some initial work with about 18 staff who were working on universal design for learning, thinking about how do we create inclusive environments for all learners? And so that teacher leader group is going to be working to deepen their own understanding to then be teacher leaders in their own schools for the best practices that provide for the inclusion of all of our students. So there's lots underway, and we'll come back very soon to provide more information and updates to both the school committee and the community as well.
Can I ask a question?
But hang on, I just want to clarify too. So, so as far as the override goes, that was to help provide the budget for the 32 positions that we had hired during COVID. So during COVID, we went through the, the process of learning where the, the students were, and there was some learning loss. So 32 positions were added during that time, and we had one-time funds that we used initially. We were able to use one-time funds again the following year to plug that gap, and the override was to provide that, that budget so that we could continue those 32 positions and be fully staffed to where we were during COVID.
Yeah, and anyone who wants, who's curious about the results of adding that staff should really watch our last meeting, which I think was July 7, 10? Yeah, where Katie Roberts went through kind of the results of testing kids, and some new practices are in place now. So I would take, I would encourage you to take a look at that, too. Sorry.
I started giving you on the same, I'm a little bit confused because the question was sort of like, is this it? Is this, you know, are we at sort of at the end of improvements? And I feel like we've seen really like two years of data showing really impressive movement on a lot of the skills that you're talking about that people have been using tutors for and sort of supplementing Hingham's program. And I think, I just don't want to leave it hanging out there that there's this image that, you know, well, we've done as much progress as we're going to make, and we've, you know, oh, well, because I really think the schools have made significant progress with the override money and with the, these positions that we've had, and that's, you know, we have data supporting that. So I understand there are a lot of parents who still are, because of all sorts of issues. I have two special ed kids myself, need to supplement the schools, but I don't, I think that's less and less becoming a necessary picture for where the schools are. I just want to push back a little bit on that narrative.
If it's okay with the chair, if it's okay to invite Dr. Cataldo, just to introduce herself so they see her face
Absolutely.
and say hello. If you want to come up, Barbara, just say hello, and so folks know who you are. Just every opportunity we get to introduce you to the community.
Yes.
Maybe at the microphone.
Sorry. I thought I was getting the comfortable chair. It's just like the other comfortable chair.
All right, I know this is tall for me.
That's all right.
Hi there. So obviously, I'm Dr. Barbara Cataldo, and I am the interim executive director of Student Services, and I will just, I know I'm going to come back and really talk about what we've been doing this summer, but one of the things I really made an effort, when the first week I was here, I contacted our chairs from the CPAC and have really made a commitment to work with them, and they expressed, you know, things that Dr. Adams already brought up, simple things like entrance and exit criteria, why can't that be on the website? I'm not, you don't want me to work on your website because that is not a gift I have. But I do agree with them. I mean, we should be as transparent as possible, and I'm just trying to step this way because you're all getting, well, somebody's getting blocked by a mic at every moment. I'm sorry. But I really do believe in transparency, and for some of our parents who have been very frustrated, I've tried to make a real effort to call back on the same day I get a call. I've had parents coming in my office all summer to talk about what they feel is working and what they wish would work better for their children, and any parents who have decided to move their children out of the district, I've invited them to come in or talk by Zoom because we can't learn if we don't talk and have a dialogue. And a dialogue isn't my talking to families or families talking to me. It really is a two-way conversation, and I pride myself on making sure I'm not going to get it right every single time. I know that, I'm not perfect, but I really think that customer service is huge, and this is not a dress rehearsal for our children, ever. So, and I, I take that quite seriously. So I will be back to talk more, and I'm now going to return that very comfortable seat in the back row, unless you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And just to, to remind people, we have the three-year strategic plan that is in place that Dr. Adams has been following since she got here, and there has already been lots of improvement and involvement on that, and she continues to provide updates on that.
And those updates are on the website, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
If I might, I just wanted to add as well that work is underway for our new elementary reading program adoption, which we're very excited about, and obviously, that too is a very great investment on the town in investing in not only the material resources, but also the professional development that's underway this summer. So all of our elementary teachers are engaging in some summer modules around the science of literacy, and we have a full series of professional development planned for next year around elementary reading. So I do think that also is worth mentioning.
Is there anyone else before we move on? Okay. All right, thank you.
In the packet is a letter from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We won the lottery from the state, not a financial one, but we are, will be undergoing a comprehensive district review, which is done under the direction of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but actually conducted by the American Institute for Research. They will provide a final report that comes three months after they're on site. The evaluation includes a process where they assess our district systems. They look at district leadership, they help us reflect on the progress, and provide information on how we can strengthen our performance. The focus of the review is to provide us formative and actionable feedback. I provided information on what they're looking at for. There are six district standards and indicators that they are, gather feedback on. Those indicators include leadership and governance, curriculum and instruction, assessment, human resources and professional development, student support, and finance and asset management. We conduct a self-assessment as part of the process and give it to them, telling them this is our progress, including lots of documentation.
this is our progress, including lots of documentation that they also review. So we're in the process of starting that collection. They come onsite and do interviews. So they'll interview members of the school committee, district and school leaders, union leadership, teachers, families, and students. They'll also do classroom observations while they're on site. A month afterwards, they'll give us their initial findings from their visit, actual site visit, and then three months later, they'll give us a final report. This is a process that districts undergo. When I looked online, I hadn't seen Hingham. I think we were chosen because we haven't had one in a long time, at least in the last seven to eight years that I looked back online. So it's a process that every district goes through. We just happen to be not going through any other reviews, so we were selected to go through the process. So it's a good thing. It's something that every district in the state goes through with the Department of Ed.
Any questions?
Yeah, so just for the self-assessment, for the school committee portion of that, how do districts usually do that? Or would this be an agenda item on a meeting, or how?
Yep, that would be probably something that we should probably do is put on the agenda and have a discussion. So we're just digging into all of the materials, but the leadership team will do some of this work early in the fall. They give us this broad window for the visit, October through May.
Okay.
So we're hoping closer to maybe the early winter, not October, but we're not sure when they'll be onsite, but we know we need to get started. And I've started already with the document collection.
Are you the liaison in this?
For the moment, yes.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, I know it's going to be a lot of work, but I mean, I think these things are incredibly important, particularly to some of the comments that were just made, because this really is going to be the Department of Ed coming in to focus on, are we providing education equitably to all students? Is everyone prepared for a college or career and civic participation? So I mean, I think this is, I think it's a great time for it, sort of post-override, second year of the strategic plan. I think this can really help us sort of drive the next strategic plan work that we'll probably start undertaking next spring.
Yep, anytime we can get feedback from others, especially from outside, who can come and take a lens and give us feedback on, from the outside, different perspectives, is valuable. We're a learning organization. We want to model that for our students, and so we continually need to be evolving and An update on the preparations for the ban on the distribution and sale of plastic single-use water bottles. I included the policy from the select board that was implemented back in April of 2023. That policy says that the schools and all municipal buildings should not be using single-use plastic water bottles and distributing, selling, or providing them on municipal sites, which include the schools. Just some information on steps we're taking. The principals will be communicating with the families about the upcoming ban. There was added information about Plymouth River. Plymouth River already started this transition in January. Ayesha and I asked the principal, any lessons learned? And he said, it went pretty smoothly. The kids adapted pretty well and just, you know, just, you know, used their water bottles and water bubblers and to get what they needed. So the transition went really well in January at Plymouth River. In preparation, food services will stop selling single-use plastic water bottles at all sites. Elementary will be able to have additional milk during lunch. The middle and high school, there may be non-carbonated, non-flavored water. So those were, there are just some details to be worked out. Flavored, non-carbonated, carbonated flavored water, sorry, for sale, but the details are being worked out. So, and I gave you some information about water bubblers. Every elementary classroom, with very few exceptions, has a water bubbler. At the middle school, there's one on every floor, in addition to one, two on the first floor. And there are lots of water bubblers and filling stations at the high school. We are also seeking to get grants that can allow us to add additional ones, as well as working with the town to see if we can go through the bidding process to add additional ones. So that you know, the facilities also monitors those water filling stations so that when the filter needs to be replaced, it will stop working. It goes from a green light to a red light, and they replace the filter as well. So they'll monitor those to make sure they're, they're working. So we're in good shape, I believe, and have some evidence that the kids can make a smooth transition.
I have another question about the elementary. Did we ever sell bottled water in elementary school?
Very small ones. Candles, we did.
And as Dr. Adams has indicated, we stopped selling it from January at the IRS. And what we found there was that, in some cases, kids bought more milk, which is not a bad thing, right? And what the principal indicated is that they kept extra water bottles on hand in case somebody didn't have a water bottle in some instances, but the kids adjusted. I mean, from my own experience at the schools as well, even before the ban, teachers always encouraged water bottles anyhow. So I think it should be pretty seamless throughout the district for other, for other schools as well.
Thanks.
Just a quick comment to that question, but first, thank you for, you know, working with the town on this and encouraging this. I think it's a positive movement for the town and has the representative on the Climate Action Planning Committee, you know, just appreciate the work on it. But I did want to point out, there is a carve-out in here for emergency use. So for anyone listening, and just everyone to be aware, in an emergency situation, obviously, when water is needed, it will be allowed in bottles. No one's going to be penalized for providing it in a situation where it is needed, or a super hot day with the kids on the field at a rep camp or that type of thing. And then just one quick question. I know there's been some concerns at the high school about the hydration stations. In the packet, you did mention that was being addressed, so I just wanted to make sure those will be up and ready for use this fall.
Yep. Ayesha and I walked the high school with Katie St. Clair. Plumbers have been on site to make sure everything is working. And with very few, very few exceptions, we should be in good shape.
Excellent, thank you.
And we believe at this point, I don't think the governor signed the budget yet, but in the governor's budget is, not that I know of, I haven't seen the news to know, but I think, I'm pretty sure she hasn't yet, but in there is continued free universal school lunch. So we believe that will be, I believe that's a very important part of Governor Healy's agenda, so hopeful she'll sign off on that, so we'll have free universal lunch again for next year for all students.
We can take that money and buy some reusable water bottles.
So the next item, does it require any action from you? So that's why it's under superintendent's report. It's just for your information. It's information on an audit, an energy efficiency audit being done by the town in conjunction with the schools of the municipal buildings to give us information on energy efficiency and also outline proposals for taking next steps to ensure cost efficiency as well as energy efficiency. I don't know if you want to add anything, Ayesha?
I met with the vendor who will be conducting the audit. And based on procurement laws within, within the United States, what we, what we can do, depending on how those audits, the results of those audits, is that we can actually see what level of savings we can get from any changes in terms of whether it be the boilers or the energy uses. And from that, we can even look at some, some other towns from what they brought to our attention have been able to use those savings to be able to fund, along with debt of roofs or other boilers and other things as well. So it's more of a wait and see. The memo in there, it just includes the guidelines that will be taken in terms of that audit. It's, it's free to us, and we're just confirming that in the, in the guidelines that it will be free, that the data will not be used for any other purpose, but just to help us with this process. So we think it should be a good thing, information point, once we get the results back. And we can figure out next steps once we receive that information.
I think the key, too, is, as Ayesha says, at no cost. So they're doing this audit at no cost to us.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Okay, yeah, so moving on to item five, communications received by the superintendent. Anything? We don't have a student here, so moving on to 5.3, any communications received by the school committee? Six is unfinished business, which we have a couple, but they're listed under new business, so I'm going to head over to new business. 7.1, to complete a second read of the memorandum of understanding with the Recreation Commission and Select Board and act as appropriate. I'm going to pass this over to Carrie Nie. She is the school committee rep to a task force that was established between the rec department, school committee, and select board to consolidate management of the town's athletic fields and outdoor courts.
Great, yeah, thank you. As we talked about before, this came out of a, the rec commission hired Weston and Sampson to conduct a field study, and one of the recommendations was that we had to consolidate the management of the fields under one department, which would be the rec department. So we've kind of been working together, and, you know, Mark Thorell at the rec and Katie St. Clair and Jim Quatermoni have all been doing a really great job running everything. But we wanted to try to memorialize what was going on and also create a vehicle so we could all talk and keep each other informed as, as we go. So there could be some synergies as far as if we're working on one field, maybe in another field needs it. It's, if everyone can talk to each other, then it might be more, better. So, so we went through it. There are a couple of highlights. So the overall goal is to manage the fields and implement the, the recommendations of the Weston and Sampson study, and then increase communication between all the three boards, the select board, the rec commission, and us. It outlines the roles of each board. It doesn't change anything. It's just kind of capturing it on paper. It creates a task force, which is, will meet twice a year to monitor how things are going. And again, communication being key. It doesn't have any, this task force doesn't have any decision-making authority. That still lies in the three boards, but it's a good way to just, you know, communicate. And then under other, just memorializes some of the understandings that we had talked about as we've worked through all of this. So, and, yeah, so it's pretty much that. And this will be reviewed annually by all of the boards and kind of signed on to. And I noticed that the rec commission and the select board have already signed off on it. So if anyone has any questions.
Any questions?
That was my question.
They had signed it, so.
Yep.
Okay, so we do need to approve this. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Sure. I will make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Recreation Commission and Select Board and have our school committee chair sign up.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's approved. Thank you, Carrie. All right. 7.2, to review the contract for the assistant superintendent and act as appropriate. This is something that we discussed during executive session, but I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Adams.
So you reviewed this back in July, possibly July, in executive session, so we're bringing it to you in the full session to, for a vote on approval.
Any questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
I would gladly make a motion to accept the contract for assistant superintendent as presented.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Carrie.
Congratulations officially, Carrie.
7.3, to discuss a change in student services legal counsel and act as appropriate. Pass this over to Dr. Adams.
So the purpose of this is to request a change in legal counsel for the coming school year, from our current counsel to the Lyons Law Group. We outline some reasons for the change. We feel that the change for the coming year will really help us strengthen relationships with our student services, including special education. The Lyons Group has some well-established relationships in the South Shore, as well as providing extensive professional development. In addition, we request this change for just this coming school year in, in the hopes of creating a small committee under the direction of the chair of the school committee, informing a committee to do some reviews and interviews of other law potential student service counsel and review together and come to a conclusion of a final legal counsel for student services.
Any questions? As Dr. Adams mentioned, we'll come up with a committee and figure out the timing of when that committee gets formed, possibly late fall, early winter, so we'll, we'll figure that out.
This is just for student services?
Just student services.
We're still using Murphy Hess, Tubman, and Lahane for other needs?
Yes.
Does this complicate that relationship if we drop them?
No, we don't.
They're still doing our contract negotiations and.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
We feel that the benefit of this is that it's a smaller organization that can provide us direct services and really help build our capacity. As we heard, we're strongly committed to rebuilding relationships with families, as well as developing our own capacity to make sure that we're meeting procedures and processes in special education, and we feel this firm can help us through this transition this year. And we'll, we'll engage in a full process in the winter, spring. We also want to engage, as we do our final search for an executive director, and engage the leadership of the special education department as well in, in making that decision, as well as the school committee.
Matt?
Just a couple of questions. How long have we been with Murphy Hess? A while.
I would say twenty-four or five years.
Yeah, four or five years, yeah, I think.
And then, is it typical that districts utilize different law firms for different services?
It's not unusual, yes.
And then, final question, just, do they represent other districts around us?
Yes.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Any other questions?
Just to put a plug in for starting the, the committee sooner rather than later.
Okay. So it will be, sorry to interrupt. So it'll be one full year, so from August, so next.
They're not on retainer. We can.
We can change whenever, right?
Change whenever.
Okay. Okay, so are we acting on this? Yes.
Yes, yeah, I think we should. So I would make a motion to accept Dr. Adams' recommendation to utilize the Lyons Law Group as interim student services legal counsel?
Yep.
Effective immediately.
Can I amend, can I amend that to add the proposed committee to that as well?
Yep. Do you want to amend it?
Just.
Is that it?
Yes. Okay.
I will second.
Sorry, go ahead.
Am I seconding the amendment?
Amendment motion.
Seconding the amendment motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, 7.4, to approve out-of-state field trips and act as appropriate. Dr. Adams, and I see Dr. Young in the audience, so I assume he's going to help out as well?
Come on up, Dr. Young. Dr. Young will speak to this opportunity for our students that's for the 2024 April span, probably it's April vacation, correct?
Most of it is April vacation, yeah.
Please go ahead.
I'm, I'm here to request your approval for a international trip to Portugal with our Cora students, supplemented by GCP students, Global Citizenship Program students, and any other students necessary to flesh out the size of the roster so that we can keep the costs at a minimum. It's a wonderful nine-day trip that will include visits to museums, architectural sites, historical sites, musical performances, a trip to an olive orchard, cork factory, and will be from Oporto in the north all the way down to the Algarve region in the south. So we'll get a broad range of cultural, geographic, and historical experiences and musical, because we'll also experience a performance of the unique cabaret style of singing called fado, which you only can hear in Portugal.
Nice.
And yes, we do offer financial assistance. And yes, we do offer financial assistance to students that need it and fundraising opportunities, although historically, that taking advantage of those opportunities is usually somewhat limited.
Thank you. Any questions?
Wasn't Rosalia Fado singer before she got popular?
I don't know.
Sorry. Irrelevant. You can market it that way. It's very popular. It's going to be great.
I know there's, just to put it in mind, I'm sure the traffic company is aware of it, but I think there's some new visa requirements coming to Europe in 2024. I'm not sure if they start in January or maybe later in the year, but US citizens, I guess, are going to be required to get visas as well, so.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm not aware of that. Our tour company is very professional. I've worked with the same tour company two years ago on our trip to Czech Republic and to Austria. They're very thorough, and one of the gentlemen with the company now I used when we went to Italy, so I'm very familiar and confident, so.
They'll know it all.
Yeah.
Great. Good reminder.
Yeah. Okay, hi. I will make a motion to approve the field trip from, sorry, the Corus GCP field trip April 11th through 19th, 2024, run by Dr. Joseph Young.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Happy summer.
Thank you.
So 7.5 is to approve a change in contract for release of the Traces Building. I know we've just approved this at our last meeting, but there is a slight change that Dr. Adams wanted to take us through.
Yep, we know you approved this last time, but there was a change, and we thought it was important to bring back the change. It says that the, they asked that be added in the, in the agreement that we would notify them by May 15th of that year if we were no longer going to continue the contract into the subsequent year. We think it's a fair ask of them to ask us to give notice by a certain date, and we thought the date was a good one in our minds of May 15th, but we just wanted to bring back the, it was a change in the contract, and we wanted to bring back to you for your approval.
If it ever is in our plans to open up a permanent spot in Hingham, we will be, certainly be in the works long before May, so.
Yes.
I don't think this backs us into any corners.
And we have the two one-year options to extend as well.
Yes. We thought this was pretty fair of them to ask, but it was a change, so we wanted to just share it with you and have your approval.
I like, I mean, I personally like it too. I think it also gives us more motivation to find, to keep this at top of mind, to find a permanent spot in Hingham. This is a great temporary, but we want to find something more permanent. There we go. Actually. You ready for a motion? All right, I will make a motion to approve the change in contract that includes a notice of vacancy by May 15th, 2024, and May 15th of 2025.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all set. Thank you. 7.6, to approve donations and grants and act as appropriate. I believe there are two that Dr. Adams is taking us through.
There are two grants. The first one is for, a grant that you saw last year as well, for $7,000 to provide for a variety of programming at the high school. It's been a collaborative effort of different staff members, guidance counselors. It allows for career exploration event for 11th graders and after-school job fair, mass higher presentations for seniors, annual Harborman Helping Hingham Day, and career center workshops on a variety of topics, topics for our students at the high school. It's for a total of $7,000.
Any questions? This is great.
Yeah.
It's always nice to get the grant money.
No, it really is. And Kathy Savery does a great job with these career planning and post-secondary workshops with the kids. They do a great financial planning session. One day you and I helped with that. They do a career one. Ben Lockheim and his team do a great job at the Harborman Helping Hingham, so this is a great financial offset to those.
Yep. Want to make a motion?
I will make a motion. Make a motion to approve the $7,000, $7,000 career grant for Hingham High School.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's approved. And one more grant.
Great. We are grateful to our new Science Director, Michelle Romato, for writing yet another successful grant to support the implementation of our new Open Sci Ed curriculum. So the Science Department was awarded a $39,000 grant to support our second year of Open Sci Ed implementation, and that grant will fund both materials, kit materials, and also professional development.
Great, thank you. Thanks to Michelle for doing that.
Yes.
Any questions?
I will make a motion to approve, to receive the grant in the amount of $39,785 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Grant FC 601, supporting Open Sci Ed expenditures.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. So move on to 7.7 to, so this is the second read, to review Policy AD on the mission statement and act as appropriate. So I'll have Ally Anderson take us through this.
Thank you. So we went through this last time. This is just an update to our policy with the mission statement to match the mission statement that we crafted for the strategic plan. So anyone has any questions?
Okay, no. I'm going to make a motion.
Sure. I will make a motion to approve Policy AD mission statement.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay, 7.8, also a second read to review Policy DJE procurement requirements and act as appropriate. This is Ally as well.
And this one, same thing, we looked at it last time, but just a change to the ranges in the numbers, changing from $50,000 to $100,000 for the competitive bidding, and then between $10,000 and $100,000 for the quotes from procurement offices.
Any questions?
Just to clarify, and we're making these changes to coincide with the MGL changes, Master General changes to procurement?
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? You want to make a motion?
Sure. I will make a motion to approve Policy DJE procurement requirements.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, moving on to item eight, Subcommittee and Project Reports and Warrants Signed. Matt?
Two quick things. Half has scheduled our next meeting, which is September 12th, so that will be the first one that I will attend. And then for the Special Ed Subcommittee, I reached out to Dr. Cataldo. I'm going to get a meeting set up with her and Dr. Adams, start to talk about next year, and similarly, reached out to the CPAC chairs and going to get time with them to have a conversation about next year.
Great, thanks. Ally? I'm not going to report. Ken?
We had a Human Rights Commission meeting this, about past Wednesday, and we're going to, had technical problems, we're going to try it again for this coming Wednesday, so.
Carrie?
So for salary negotiations, we met with Unit B, the Paraprofessionals, on July 25th. We had meetings, a couple of meetings scheduled with the Bus Drivers Union, but it was delayed. Their council had some health issues, so I will follow up with them. And then we have meetings scheduled August 28th with Unit B, the Paraprofessionals, on the 30th with Unit A, the teachers, and on the 31st with Unit D, which is the administrative assistants. It would be a busy week.
Busy.
Yeah.
Jen?
Just that there are warrants in the packet.
Okay. Have anything to report?
And I'll just give an update for the public. Everybody saw in the packet from Dr. Adams, but work continues to move a lot pretty smoothly at Foster School. Work on the retaining walls continues. The lower wall is about 80% complete, the upper about 70. Well, foundation has already been started to be poured, so we hope everyone can make it to the very exciting groundbreaking ceremony on the 25th.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
Okay, item nine, other items not reasonably known within 48 hours. Okay, so we've got upcoming meetings. As Michelle mentioned, we've got the groundbreaking, the next school committee meeting, we're back to 7:00 PM, which is Tuesday, August 29th, and then we've got one on Monday, September 11th. I believe at the next meeting, Dr. Adams will provide us with dates of teacher orientation that we might be invited to attend. So.
Just make note that the next full school committee meeting is on a Tuesday, which people will.
Yes, good point. Tuesday, right.
Not, not on the Monday.
That's right.
Totally up to.
Would, so something came up about possibly moving school committee meetings to 5:00 PM permanently?
That might be.
Or maybe even 6:00?
Yeah.
Would that be something that might work with people?
It doesn't work for me.
Doesn't?
Okay. Well, I mean, maybe 6:00, but.
Something to consider, and then we can revisit it.
Yeah, I think I, yeah, I think I have to look at my schedule the next couple of months.
Yep.
For 5 o'clock.
Okay.
I don't know what it is. Has it just me, or?
No, I mean, I don't know, like, I'm not sure 1:00, but 5:00 might be a little tough. But earlier, probably better.
Earlier, better?
Like, six or six thirty.
Got it.
6:00 AM.
I think we, I think we, Carrie and I talked about it today, because we, we had, I mean, it's part of it's for the administration, right?
It's a long day for them.
It's a very long day for you folks and for us too. But then there are, we have parents who have kids to run around, so that sort of makes sense. People who work outside of the home or in Boston, it sometimes works. But it was just thought if it does work, even a little bit earlier sometimes, even if it was 6:30, right? Sometimes it just gets you out of here a little, especially as we get deep into budget season when the meetings get long.
And I think it's been challenging in the past for, for parents and people to participate, but now that everything's on Zoom, it's much easier. So.
And I would just also put in a plug to people, when they're making their Subcommittee meetings, make those during, not at 8:00 at night for the sake of the staff that needs to come to them.
All right, all right. All right, something to consider. We'll revisit. Okay.